Today it is, yeah.
A lot of caffeine.
That's all right.
He made it himself.
It was okay. Yeah.
Put in about seven scoops.
That's what it should be.
Pretty strong.
Yeah, leave it, drink it. Drinks, if he brings anything, it's very strong.
I don't drink the weeks.
We're almost there. All right. It is nine AM sadly coming. We'll just start, I guess. So I will bring this meeting of the Cuddington Board of County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, January 12, 2021. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Gable, I believe.
Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Thank you. Item number two, call for public comments. We will state, still take phone calls from individuals if there's something they would like to address the board. If it's not on the agenda, the two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight and eight eight two six two nine seven. Also, we are streaming live on YouTube. And if you have a cellphone, if you would please silence that. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Is there any on the agenda for any of the fellow commissioners?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the January 12, 2021 agenda. Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the January 5th, 2021 meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Monthly reports, we'll start out with auditor Cindy, if you'd want to fill us in, what's happening?
Uh, excuse me, this is the, probably the busiest year, busiest month out of the year for the auditor's office. We have a very short timeframe to get the old year cleared out and get the new year going. And we've been short staffed since about the first meeting, our first business day of the year. But we have gotten W2s taken care of, tax notices have been run and are getting ready to go in the mail. We did get our year cleared out so we could start doing, paying bills in the new year. Number of things that need to be done at the end of the year before we can move forward. And we are, we are progressing. We, nothing, nothing else really right now, other than just getting, the annual report will be starting as soon as we get things caught up. We've run our tax notice reports and sent those to the Department of Revenue. So we are, we're into 2021 while we're still working in 2020.
Takes a while to wrap everything up. All right.
That's about it.
Any questions for Cindy? Okay. We'll move on then to directive equalization. Shauna. Good morning, Shauna.
Morning, Sha. Push the button, it's not on.
Second. Okay, so the pricers are out in the field, still continue to work on all the building permits. I'm hoping to have them done out in the field first week of February-ish. And then the office staff and I are working on all of our year-end things. We're working with the Department of Revenue on our audit, emailing back and forth. She's looking at everything. And then, um, once she gets through all the stuff that she had sent them, we'll sit down and kind of have a Zoom call and go over, um, the audit and the audit is over, all the sales. Um, and then we are basically getting ready to send out our notices as of March 1st. I know Carol's getting ready to send out the tax bills. As soon as those go out, we're going to be fielding a lot of phone calls about that and then going through with our new stuff, which I can't believe it's this long, but.
And with that, um, the notice on March 1st, that's usually when we put our little insert in there.
I need to talk to you guys about that. We have new wording going on our assessment notices this year. They just want, basically she put in there about all the programs that we have. Um, and our Ultra programmer could not get everything and put in on the assessment notice that's already in the computers. We actually have to put it on another sheet. So I would prefer maybe one year, we could skip that insert. Otherwise, we're going to be using a lot bigger, yeah, a little too much to put into every single envelopes. We're going to have to be putting those in. And that's just like our elderly assessment, the renewable energy veterans, all that stuff. They just now want us to put those on the assessment notice, just the wording saying, you know, we do have these programs called to see you. Okay, you know, so we're going to have to be putting those out in there. But next year, they'll come right on our notices.
Oh.
We'll be able to say paper.
Right. I think Rick had, he was in there too about, did you usually have something on that as well or not on our notice? Seems like there was.
Yes, that's, and it was, it's been the same thing every year. So just about everyone has gotten it every year.
Yeah. One year.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
But if you guys still want that in there.
Probably add to the whole sheet.
It's going to add a little bit, but.
Yeah.
It just depends. It's something we could think of, we still have them on.
Right.
As I, as you're talking about that, probably one of the things that I know that I always look for it and I always check, make certain I have is the, uh, the call-in number. You know.
For the office?
No, 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 for, uh, if you got a burn or.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's probably. One thing that I check.
For you to look at?
Yeah. I just, I don't remember anybody else ever looks at it, but that's the one thing that I do look at, you know? You know, that's, and it wouldn't take, that could be just a very. Wouldn't take my crew.
Well, it's one sheet regardless. So, I mean, anything on there? Yeah, I mean, so.
If you have 20 letters, it's no more than if you have 55, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah. So, I mean, but if you guys want to still put it in there, it's, it's not that big a deal. It's only going to, you know, add postage on the ones that are already just. Just the ones that get pushed over, so.
Or one year hopefully.
I can think about it. I can ask you guys again next month where we send them off.
So it's good.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thanks.
All right. All right. Thank you, Shauna. Okay, we'll move on then to the welfare report. Morning, Carrie.
Morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Timing is impeccable.
Right? Perfectly. Were you watching?
No, I wasn't actually. I just wanted to give you guys an update on the, um, the cares. We're still waiting for, um, new contracts, the contracts to come out. They were, um, for the old one, they did send an email saying that they are intending to, to continue it. They're just waiting to see, um, trying to get all the old ones finished up. As of right now, there's like two hundred, a little over 200 still open. And then they're going to, um, request from the state to keep whatever money is remaining, um, to, to continue that program.
Does that 200 statewide?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, but statewide. We have all of ours in Cuddington County have all been completed, um, submitted for payment. So ours are all done. But, so that's that. So as soon as that happens, um, they're requesting that everybody have their stuff done by the 22nd of January. Um, and they'll know how much money there is and then they'll be able to, um, request for the state to keep that remaining. Right now, I think they've done 5.8 million out of the 10 million that was allotted. So, um, they'll request to have that money, the remaining money kept for that program. Um, and then the other funding, we're just waiting for, um, the state of South Dakota, um, submitted an application to the IRS. And, uh, so they're just waiting for that to come back and then figure out who's going to be the administrator of it. Um, and they'll send out contracts from that. They're thinking the end of January, they should have all of that stuff ready to go. So, um, that's just kind of an update on that one. Do you guys have any questions on the reports that I sent over? To kind of give an idea of what we have done. Most of it, of course, was cares, um, because a lot of people have been affected by COVID. So we were able to run them through that program.
Again, it's on the YouTube, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any question, burials?
Yes, um, and I was going to let you know that's burials, those were, um, November and December. I noticed that they weren't included in the, in the last report that she had done. And so, um, some of those burials were, were in November.
Okay.
I do appreciate you giving us the summer numbers and not November or.
Yeah, yeah. So the burials, unfortunately, that one, there is, you know, some of both, um, November and December, but.
But it's more.
Yeah.
All the rest are December numbers.
Absolutely, yep. Um, and this doesn't include, um, the ones that, um, I kept was processing for, um, the county as well.
Right. That includes. Okay.
Yep.
What's, what's the breakdown roughly between both our office and ICAP as far as processing those? Or do they kind of all come in and one, just kind of?
Well, we're kind of redefining that right now, um, because before I was just concentrating on cares. So she was kind of taking care of everything else. And now that the cares has kind of done for a minute, we were kind of both kind of doing them.
Okay.
So, but before it was one family, her doing the, the intakes.
Okay.
And processing.
Okay.
Nice to see you're working together though, that helps.
Well, yeah.
It's like 66% were cares, so that took a good portion of time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything you want to highlight on the slides while I got them up?
I don't think so. I think, um, unless you guys have anything else that you want to.
And for these, the costs on the burials on this slide, is that both months as well, November and December?
Yeah.
Okay, for all seven of those.
Yeah. I'm sorry, November, December, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, speaking of burials, did we, uh, did we, uh, have a new contract for this coming year?
It's coming on the, uh, next week's agenda.
Okay.
Something for you to. Decide on before, before next Tuesday, we have to set the initial burial rates.
Okay. I know it shouldn't have come in. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. Item number seven, action to authorize a chair to sign annual title six policy statement and advertise notice of public rights. Cindy, would you like?
And I did notice, um, the, the policy statement that I sent out to you had an error on it. In one place, Jim Sutton's name was still on there, so I just took that off and put James Torsonson in that spot. This is something that we are required to do annually, um, and it is to ensure that we are eligible for grant funding.
Make motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose that motion carries. Item number eight, action to set compensation of election judges.
Oh, I just need to pull something up here. So this is something we're supposed to do every year also, and we do not anticipate any elections this year, but that does not mean that something special could not pop up. So we need to take action to set compensation. And I would recommend leaving it at the rate we were paying, um, last year and then, um, looking at it a little bit more closer, a little bit more closely next year. Because like I said, we should not have any elections this year. If we did, um, it would not probably be an election like a general election. It'd be a smaller turnout, I'm, I'm guessing. So I would recommend leaving compensation at $175 for Election Day plus $50 for attending the election school just for this odd year.
I'll make the motion to do that.
Motion by Gable. Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number nine, action to approve a notice to bidders for annual highway supplies and weed chemicals. Rick is here too.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
This is something we do every year for our country, like metal pipe. Piece of fuel, ethanol, ashall, E rock, gravel crushing, asphalt, burial and weed chemicals, so.
So I'll move that we authorize the, um, procedure for receiving bids.
A second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 10, action to approve, uh, resolution setting road, load limits on county roads.
This is something else that we do every year after setting paperwork in the state. So, uh, carrier enforcement will run our roads or overweight vehicles and things like that.
It goes from February to May 1st.
I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. And any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Just the specials that aren't aware, let's, what kind of low limits are we talking about?
We have seven tons per axle and 40 mile an hour per truck.
And that goes from February 15th to May 1st inclusive.
Yes.
When was that date?
February 15th to May 1st. I'm sorry, didn't mean to say. I was just reading the resolution.
I was just living with Rick before the meeting and, you know, this is kind of an unusual year. We haven't had any moisture, so, uh, the roads are really pretty darn good shape. I mean, they're not soft, there's not any snow sitting on the roads and, and I would encourage, Rick and his crew to keep a close eye on them. Simply if we could pull those low limits off, you know, before May 1st. Let's see if we can't do that healthy part. As far as good, they're going to be anxious to move grain this year with the price of grain as high as it is. There's a lot of it going right now, but there's still some that'll be dragging their feet and that'll be great to move, uh, in April. So, uh, that, that's just my comment.
Yeah, yeah, we get ready to get them off as soon as we can because we have stuff to hold, so.
I probably get more calls about that than anything else in the road limits, so, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, just, uh, put a couple of inches of asphalt down. It's, it's our duty to take care of those roads.
Yeah, and we do. Yeah, we do. Uh, but I agree with Myron. I think if we, if we have an opportunity to lift those, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. Especially this year will be.
I still have my friend in Hamilton, they want us to extend our border south. I guess they say yours are a whole lot better than theirs. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Any other discussion comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 11, thanks, Rick. Yep, I think we're good. Item number 11, action on a request for clothing allowance for highway management. I think we need to do a little more research on that, get more information, so that won't be addressed today. Item number 12, action to approve bank.
What's the, may I ask, what information do you need? Or what's needed?
Well.
What more information do we need? I guess the question that I have.
Going back and looking at when some of the other ones started and how that all came about.
So I think, I think the issue is, it's an, it's an issue of want to make sure that we're doing things fairly among the departments. So if one department has a clothing allowance or something in their budget to pay for uniforms, we want to kind of reflect that similarly. So, just, is it, we really haven't had a chance.
It was kind of, uh, did that go back to negotiations with the union? So really, management is a non-bargaining part of that union. So it'd be up to the discretion of this board to make the determination if we wanted to proceed with that or not. And I thought we had talked about that and decided that we weren't going to do that.
Right. Some other, something came to light that there's other departments where management does, so.
So we want to get that all clear.
Yeah. Anyway. Need more information. All right. Item number 12, action to approve bank depositories for 2021 and authorized warrants signers.
And this was provided to you by the Treasurer's Office. Cuddington County Depositories, ReliaBank will be, will continue to be used for checking and the depositing of cash. And the other banks listed will be authorized to sell the county certificates of deposit and for investment at competitive bids. And those banks are Dakota Bank, First Bank and Trust, First Premier Bank, Great Western Bank, Midwest Bank, Plains Commerce Bank, ReliaBank, South Dakota FIT and Wells Fargo Bank.
Motion to approve.
Then it also lists the authorized signers for warrants.
Sorry.
All right. I have a motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen. They both kind of made the same motion. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 13, review of delinquent tax list.
And those are on file in my office if you, if anybody wants to look through them.
What do we have for dollar amount this year?
That I don't have right now.
I just wondered if it was higher in order.
I think it's very comparable to where it was last year, to tell you the truth.
Same people, so.
Yep. Percentage wise, it's very comparable year to year.
Yep.
Item number 14, action to approve the 2021 payroll resolution.
Make a motion to.
This is a resolution. The changes are based on the resolution from last year and 1.75% has been applied to each step within this resolution.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 15, action to approve a request for window blinds and installation of the veteran service office. And we have our veteran service officer, Todd Rose, with us this morning.
Good morning, Todd. Good morning, commissioners. So, um, I reached back out to, uh, floors and more. They can get those blinds, they can get them installed. Basically, it's still the same price there, $445. So.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Our second.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any questions or comments?
Just so people know, normally the, the, the expense, the level is, uh, $2,000 for board approval, but because it's in rented office space, that's why, just any, any modification requires our approval, so. That seems like a reasonable cost, so.
There's probably a little bit more, uh, information, Todd, is the reason that you need blinds in there is because of the sun shining in the windows, you can't read the screen on the field, right?
Right. And, uh, when we reconfigured the office a little bit here just recently, now Peg faces the east, so that sun comes right in on top of her. I can't see. But she does like sitting next to the radiator. She does like that. Okay, thank you.
Right. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 16, action to approve planning and zoning board appointments. And we had one addition on that board from last year. Luke's recommendation is, uh, Charles Rosso's term expired at the end of this year. And apparently there's been some difficulty with his other job and, um, being able to attend the planning and zoning meetings. So Luke's resident, res, recommendation is to reappoint Rodney Klot and Alexandra Conkey to the place previously held by Mr. Rosso.
I did, uh, visit with Luke in reference to, uh, Charlie Russell. And I, and I want to publicly, uh, thank Charles Russell for serving on the board, this last term that he's had. And he's brought some good insight to that board, and I've always valued his insight because he does live out on the farm, out in the county. He's actually a producer out there. And when we had, especially when we had, uh, permit, uh, requests for hog operations or for confinement systems, Charlie was kind of the go-to guy. Charlie was, uh, right on top of that stuff and we'll miss him. He was a valuable, uh, board member and thank you, Charlie, for serving.
I would dito those comments, being on that board as well. It was nice to have him as a, a board member.
And Alex Conkey is the recommendation to replace Charlie and, uh, that seems to be built very nicely as well. What's the length of that term?
Three years.
So, Charlie, two years. Need a motion and a second.
Oh, well, three years.
Three. Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
Second by Gable. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries. Item number 17, action to approve the weed board appointments. Uh, there were two terms that expired at the end of 2020. Those were John Conkey and Arlen Banky. And those two have expressed a willingness to continue serving on the weed board. Their terms will now end in 2023, December 31st.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 18, action to approve volunteer rosters for workers' compensation insurance. Uh, the three that I had to send out to you were weather spotter volunteers and search and rescue team. And we also include the deputy sheriff reserves. And those have not changed, to my knowledge, since the last list we received. So those are the lists that we would need to approve, um, in order to qualify these individuals for coverage under our workers' comp.
Move to approve.
Second.
Johnson, second by Gable. Any questions or?
Is there a list of reserve deputies?
I, I did not send it out because it has not changed. I do have it in my office and there are, uh, three or four people on that list. I can. We don't need to list their names, just the, uh, the, uh, the roster, the roster that they're serving. You good with that?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 19, notice of the closure of the county offices on Mon- Monday, January 18th, 2021. That is a holiday.
And per our policy, we, uh, follow that procedure. It's a federal holiday. No action is needed.
Item number 20, action to approve claims for payment. Cindy wants to go through and hit some highlights.
Actually, I did not find any highlights. Uh, it's a relatively small claims list this month. Total claims were just over 686,000 of that amount, just over 416,000 goes to the state of South Dakota. The majority of that is just over 413,000. It goes for the collection of motor vehicle taxes in the month of December. And then the county's claims are just over $270,000. And yeah, nothing really out of the ordinary this time.
Move to approve.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 21, action possible discussion on COVID-19 practices procedures policy. Do we have anything this week?
Oh.
Item number 22, action to approve automatic.
There was one question about, um, essential workers that just came up, just for people's, just kind of FYI. So if somebody in an office, it gets COVID, everybody else in that, that office, because most county employees are essential, because we're dealing with the public, you continue to work, but you still monitor much more closely for symptoms. You wear a mask, if you get sick, you go home. So there is, it's not, you don't quarantine the people, but you just take extra precautions. So that's, that's the, that's. you don't quarantine the people, but you just take extra precautions, so that's, that's the, that's the CDC recommendation for, for uh, essential workers, so that was a question that came up during the week.
And county employees are considered essential worker.
Yeah.
Alright, item number twenty-two, action to approve automatic budget supplements. Uh, nothing for twenty-two today. Twenty-three, action to approve personnel changes. And I did receive a number of these just yesterday, so these are all pretty standard. First one is Jared Olson, he's the deputy sheriff, he's due his anniversary step increase to step twelve, twenty-eight ninety-one per hour. Rick Holinka is maintenance three in the highway department, he's doing anniversary step increase, he is at the top of the steps, so all he will receive is a COLA allowance this year, twenty-five ninety-six per hour. Lynn Solberg is the assistant highway superintendent, he'll go to step nine, twenty-nine dollars and one cent per month, or per hour, sorry. Mitch Callhoff is maintenance two at the highway. Do an anniversary step increase to step four, twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents per hour. Matt Dargitz is maintenance two at the highway, he'll go to step ten, twenty-three seventy-nine per hour. Jeff Case is maintenance three, and he is already at the top step, which is fourteen, so he will get a COLA one point seven five percent increase, and that will put him at twenty-five eighty-six per hour per our payroll resolution. Motion by Vandy.
Also good.
Second by Gable, who is the motion?
Vandy's.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Item number twenty-four, travel requests, I don't think there's any of those, um, twenty-five, public notices, possible call of commissioners, anyone think of anything? We can all, maybe a few of us, three of us be together at. Cracker barrels don't start yet, do they?
Not yet.
Okay. I noticed that was something from last year.
Today's the first day of the session.
Yeah. It'll be coming up, probably.
Probably.
Alright, how about um, any old business, number twenty-six? Any old business, how about twenty-seven, any new business? Anything for the open? Status quo, okay. Nothing for the open, I don't know of any needs to go into executive sessions.
Do you want to just go briefly, um, just really quick, there'd be no action, just to.
Under.
Be personnel.
Personnel?
Yep.
Okay, alright, I would look for a motion or a second.
There was nobody else in here.
I know. Uh, we were just going into executive session, did you need something?
Oh.
Okay, Charlie or Myron did, we already passed that point, but Myron did ask if um, if the balance, the delinquents are comparable to other years, and I, when I looked at them, I thought they were very comparable to other years.
Last year was the fewest certificates we sold in twenty-three years, and I, yeah, and we, we normally, and it was less than one percent of the, we'll, we'll subcurry that.
We normally um, collect over ninety-nine percent regularly every year, so.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Carol, so there are the lists.
Right, the reason that I have said is that, working with some of these people, I know they don't pay their taxes until they become delinquent, because we don't charge enough interest.
We charge what we're allowed to by statute, so yes.
Yeah, you understand?
Alright.
They just, they don't pay them simply because they, they just want to use our money, basically, for, for whatever.
So did we have a motion to go into executive session?
We do.
Okay, motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vandy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Just, I don't want to be any, actually, just briefly.
Okay.